Good evening, everyone. Those who are in person and online, welcome to the February 7th business meeting of the Director's of Roseburg Public Schools. This time I'd like to ask Director Krimmets to lead us in the pledge. Well, first of all, I'd like to thank Russ Bolland and his staff and the central office staff for preparing this for tonight's meeting. We did take a tour around 4:45 and this is really a nice campus. And it's when they go into the classrooms and it's another one of our fantastic schools. We appreciate that. Couple of housekeeping rules. Number one, would you please silence your phones? Number two, our meetings are always on Zoom or business meetings and they're recorded. So sometime tomorrow, the meetings, this meeting will be archived. And if you're ever wanting to watch a meeting live, go to our website, main page and the information a few days before this meeting or any business meeting that we have will be posted. Do we have anybody from the news media here tonight or online? Yes, we don't. And tonight, we will have public participation. So when you came in, there's a table and you'll need to fill out a card. And if you're wanting to address the board tonight, we'll give you two minutes. I know it doesn't sound very long, but so kind of put your thoughts together. There's other ways to communicate with us through our district emails. And we're more than happy to respond back to you on that. At this time, okay. My pacemaker is working. At this time, I would like to ask Russ to come up and he's going to share some great news. Oh, good, kids are coming up too.
Better.
It's even better. The good news of.
Welcome to Fullerton Elementary. We would like to give a special welcome to school board members, parents, students, and community members who've taken their time to be here.
As members, we are members of the Student Council here at Fullerton. Our goal as a student council is to increase school spirit, promote service, be examples of strong character, and increase our leadership skills.
This year, as a student council, we are learning about having a growth mindset. Having a growth mindset is believing that with hard work, patience, and time, we can improve.
Instead of saying we'll never be good at this, we say I'll keep trying.
Instead of thinking mistakes are bad, we decide that mistakes are learning opportunities.
Instead of thinking, I already know this. I don't need practice. We decide I want to improve and grow.
We hope you will enjoy your time at Fullerton this evening. We would now like to introduce our principal, Mr. Bolland, and thank him for all the hard work that he has done for our school.
I told the kids that they could just get up here and do the whole presentation. They'd probably do a lot better job than me. But I want to thank everyone for being here tonight. It's truly a pleasure to have you on this campus because it truly is a great place to be. And I appreciate the opportunity to speak with you tonight too. And I promise I'll be brief. Most people that know me know I'm pretty direct and to the point and don't ramble on very much. So next slide, please, Michelle. Everything we do on this campus, we do, it has a purpose. And every single purpose that we have relates right directly back to these frameworks. Our 5D instruction that we do directly relates to the district strat plan directly. Our SEL things that we do on this campus directly relates to our castle framework. And we believe that all those things are interconnected. The, talk a little bit about past and current state of our school. Most people know that I took over as principal mid-October. And I can remember back, my very first meeting with the staff, I said, I don't want to come in and make a bunch of changes and do that. I just want to come in, let's put our heads down and go to work. Well, that lasted for about three days and we had to change the master schedule. We collapsed three kindergarten classrooms down to two. We moved three different instructors around. Tremendous amount of change and we did that all within three weeks. And the staff was tremendous through it all because here I am coming in with a secondary background. They had to teach me and help me do all these things. I didn't know how to do a master schedule and had a tremendous amount of help doing that. And the staff didn't blink an eye and they just did a fantastic job working through that. I wanted to spend a lot of time working on culture. Culture is very important to me. And I think that we as adults have to be right if the school culture is going to be in a good spot. Go on to the next slide. We had an activity that we did for professional development. I gave staff a list of about 30 words and they had to narrow down their list. And once they got to their final four words, they had to explain why they chose those words. And the four highest words were respect, love, integrity, and connected. Every communication that I have with staff has something to do with culture and has something to do to relate to that. And we've, and we've really dived into this. And when the adults are not right on campus, and I can say for 100% certainty, our adults are right. Okay, we're headed in the right direction and the staff here is absolutely tremendous to work with. But if we're not right, the kids know it. The kids feel it. Okay, and as I go on, you're going to see what our scores are doing. The kids feel what it's like now. And when people come on our campus, I want them to see, feel, and hear those four words up there. And I truly believe they do. That's one of the reasons why I decided to stay on for the full year was because of the way I felt when I was on this campus. Our vision for student learning at Fullerton, we endeavor to create a positive, engaging learning environment that promotes a positive mindset. You heard that from the kids and support students in feeling connected, safe, confident, challenged. Okay, every single classroom, everyone does this. And I can say that because as my staff will attest to, I'm in classrooms a lot. I do not want to be sitting in my office answering emails and doing those things. I want to be with kids and our, and our teachers. And I'm in classrooms every single day and every single classroom does this. And it's a great thing to see. Our vision for teacher learning. Teacher education at Fullerton has a clear purpose to improve academic and SEL instruction and is immediately actionable and relevant. I'm not a big meeting guy. You don't have a meeting just to have a meeting. When we have a meeting, it's very targeted and directed. So for example, two weeks ago, we had a math PD and our math team got up. They taught a lesson to our staff. I asked the staff, email me when you're going to do that lesson. I want to come and watch it. The staff emailed me. I went into their classrooms, watched it. Yesterday, myself and the two math team members, we were able to go around to every classroom on our campus during math time to watch their lessons, to see exactly what our PD had done for the instruction for our kids. And we saw amazing, amazing things happening on the campus. So it's very, very targeted and very directed. Going into some numbers, our state report card, all the area, all the arrows are moving up. Okay, they're increasing and I expect they'll increase even more. Are they where we need to be? No, they're not. But we're growing and our numbers will show that. You know, we, we're a large school. We have 350 kids. And, and I would say we have 350 of the best kids in Roseburg. And I'm kind of partial to that because I'm the principal here. But I truly, truly love every single one of them. And they're, you can see the type of kids that we have. The next slide, which I think is important, and the one thing that really stuck out to me on this is 75% of our staff is three or years more in the, in the education field. Okay, so they're experienced staff. So whoever has the privilege of stepping into my role next year, they're coming in and the staff is very experienced in what they do. They're very, very good at their craft. And that's the biggest thing is solidifying this position so the school can keep growing the way it needs to grow. Our attendance data. In '21, '22, we're at 88.85. '22, '23, we're at 90.50. The next year, okay, this year currently, we are at, okay, 92.51. So it's already, we're at a 2% increase with our attendance. Goes back to our culture. Our numbers. For our regular attenders, and this, we've already met our goal on this, but we need to keep going. In '21, '22, our regular attenders were 57%. Then it jumped to 63. Currently, today, we're at 73%, okay, a regular attenders. So we set a goal earlier in the year to be at 69. Okay, we've already beat that at 73, but we need to keep on pushing that and growing that to get it even higher. But once again, it goes back to our culture. Kids want to be here and we want kids here. Our reading data. This is one I'm most proud of. Our reading and our math data. Our tier one, you can see our fall scores on our right. On the left is our winter scores. Tier one, 39% is the highest percentage for a winter benchmark in the last four years. Tier three improvement is down 16% and our tier one growth is up 18%. It's the greatest winner, winner benchmark growth in the last four years. Goes back to our culture and what we're building and what we're continuing to do. Our math goals. Tier one, we're at 25%, which is the highest percentage in the winter benchmark in the last four years. Tier three, we were down 18%. Tier one growth, 14% is the second highest overall growth in the last four years. And I didn't like this. It was like losing a football game seven to six, but we missed it by 1% to be the highest growth in the last four years. But those numbers are growing and they're steadily, steadily, steadily improving. And that's what we want to see. So with all these numbers, where do we go from here? We will keep pushing. Okay, we will keep pushing and keep growing our culture that we want to have here on this campus. And more importantly, we'll keep growing our practice, the craft of teaching and what's best practices. And we'll keep doing that through our professional development activities, which we get to go to one tomorrow. Next slide, our goals, and I'll be brief with these. Our goals, we want to increase, you know, from 37% to 47%. Our goal two, our IEPs, we want to increase those by 5%. Goal number three, we've already met that. Okay, we're at 73% right now. We want to keep growing that. It'd be great to give above 80%. And then our mathematics, OSAS, we want to grow by 5%, 22 to 27% by the end of the year. The next four slides that you have in your packet are, there are steps that we take for each one of those goals. A school-wide goal, class-wide goal, and when it's applicable, an individual goal. So you can see our ELA, and I'm not going to read these to you. Our ELA goal, the next slide is how we're going to make sure that we're doing our IEP goals and meeting those. And then our math goal. And we're working heavily on math. And in the spring, we'll, we'll spend a lot of time. And I know our staff will be excited to hear this, but working on our writing. Okay, and how that affects and how that's going to grow our, our reading scores as well. So our attendance goal. So the last slide, and this is something I strongly, strongly believe, and I'm saying it more and more, but kid by kid, we have to do the work. And all those percentages and things that we're talking about to us and to my staff, they're not percentages. They're kids. And that's the way we look at it. And so by kid by kid, we want to do the work and we want to make sure every kid is growing, every kid is loved, every kid is cared for, and every kid is being pushed to succeed in our school. And that happens on a daily basis. And I can say this and I'll get emotional and I always do it when I talk about this. It's been a pleasure to do this job and to be with these people back here. I've been at the district 34 years and it's truly been a blessing and a highlight of my career. And I've been involved with a lot of great things, a lot of state championships, a lot of great games, a lot of great awards that I've received over the years, but nothing has compared to this. It's truly a great place to be. So, thank you.
And with that, I think we ought to just end the meeting. All right. Thank you, Russ. It's been a long time. We've been together, worked together for a long, long time. It's been a pleasure. Okay, Hannah, and you brought a guest with you tonight. So would you please introduce yourself and a guest, please?
Hi, guys. I'm Hannah Heiburger. I am the ASB president and I am here with Apollonia Heap. And we're going to be doing the RHS Leadership Report for tonight. So it's officially a new semester at RHS. And with that comes the new use of the vestibule door system at RHS. So that means after the morning AM lunch tardy bell, the doors lock and everyone must be buzzed through the multi-way door system. So this new system has added a lot of safety to the school and I know a lot of students have felt that. We have a class at our school right now called mock trial and they recently took their class to the courthouse for two, two competitions. So that was a really great experience for them. And a club called Astra is currently making Valentine cards for veterans so that they have a nice handmade card to open around the holiday. So that's a nice community service act that they're getting done in that club. And Band recently had a fundraiser last Saturday where they sold tickets to an unlimited pancake breakfast at Applebee's. The Band program got 40% of the funds and ended the afternoon with $7, $1,700 of profit. Tomorrow, the theater department will be partnering with Red Robin for a fundraiser for the Spring Musical. So if you guys would like to support the program, you can go to Red Robin for dinner and mention to the waiter that they're, that you're there in support of the Addams Family Musical and the theater will get 20% of the money made tomorrow night. And yearbook is just about finished with the largest yearbook in the history of RHS with a total of 316 pages with all student design content. And robotics has their league qualifier competition this Friday, which will be held at RHS.
Okay, for some sports announcements, Cheer has their first competition this Saturday in Oregon. Unified basketball has their next home game February 21st at 6:00 PM in the main gym. Swim has their district meet all Friday and Saturday at the Lamalane in Eugene. Tonight at 7:00 PM, the wrestling team will be holding their last home dual meet. Both the boys and girls soccer programs are hosting a Monday evening kickaround at 5:30 PM on Finlay Field. Asher Vendenberg, a senior on the boys' basketball team, was voted Waffed Spanx Oregon Boys Basketball Player of the Week with over 16,000 votes. And spring sport registration is now open and must be completed by February 21st.
Now on to the leadership section. So leadership has been hard at work preparing for the many events that we host in the second semester. And in preparation for the Arts Assembly that will be taking place on February 23rd, we held auditions last week with a substantial amount of auditions compared to last year. So it's really great to see that this assembly that was brought back last year after COVID has started to gain more popularity and interest. And in addition to the weekly morning announcements that leadership does every Monday, we have started making video announcements containing the exact same content. And this is to ensure that those who aren't at school first period or those who don't hear them in the morning, come to school late, are all getting the same information. So that can be found at our leadership Instagram page. And this week, our class was put into committees on Monday. So we now have groups working on the Arts Assembly, Kindness Week, Senior Family Brunch, Publicity, and Prom. And our class also presented prom theme ideas to eat to like our whole class. And then we narrowed it down to a handful that we will be sending out to the junior and senior class for the final decision of the prom theme. And on Monday, we held our public student council meeting and inter-club council meeting. And it was super great to connect with the clubs and students that our school is involved in. And on the topic of clubs, here at RHS has decided to give out our second round of club grants. And we are super excited to help fund the more extracurriculars that the student body feels so passionate about. Thank you.
Great report. Any questions? Thank you. At this time, we're going to do student recognition. Director Leone gets the honor of doing that. He's going, when he calls your name, we would ask the student and their parents and their friends and their teachers, everybody that is with them, please come up front.
After who to face here, but hi, my name's Mike and it has been such a pleasure to serve on the school board. But this is the time I get to do the, my favoritest time when we do these, these, these board meetings. And that's when we get to honor the students. And so we'll start with, with Fullerton Elementary School, fifth grade, Scarlett Brown.
Okay, can we have friends and family to come on up?
Okay, let's see, let's, not sure how we'll face this. Let's stand over here so we can, everybody just. Okay. I had a chance to read this and I, this is one special scoop. Scarlett Brown is quite literally every teacher in the ring. Scarlett spends her time always trying to be her best. She takes pride in doing so. In the classroom, she competes only with herself and uses her mad skills and quick mind to empower. I'll talk loud and I need my glasses. All right. Okay, she works hard and produces work of the highest quality every single time. She applies the same mentally to her athleticism and she shines on the court as a teammate as well. Although Fullerton staff says they have no doubt that Scarlett can achieve anything she desires, it would not be surprising to someday find her pacing the floors of her very own classroom. Getting, getting where her students are, getting where her students are to guide and help them. There will truly be a hole to fill when she leaves Fullerton and starts her adventures in middle school next year. Congratulations. Okay.
One, one more. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, Jolaine Middle School. Sixth grade, we have Cade Bungardner. Where's Cade at? All right. Hi, Cade. All right, congratulations here. Oh, let me, oh, great, thank you. Hey. Here you can hold that. Okay. Cade puts forth 100% effort in everything he does. He consistently exhibits a strong work ethic and actively contributes valuable insights during class discussion. On a daily basis, you can observe the high level of respect and empathy that Clyde showed, Cade shows towards his peers and teachers. He shows a willingness to help and even mentor other students. Cade is someone who uses good judgment and does the right thing when he thinks no one is looking. He is a joy to have in all his classes and Jolaine's staff are so proud to have him represent the school. Congratulations. Good job. Roseburg High School, 11th grade. We have August Hastings. All right, just to me here. This is your very valuable. All right. Okay. Oh, everybody. Okay, August is an exemplary student characterized by his positive and unwavering approach to learning. August is unafraid to grapple with complex questions and problems that lack the solution, showcasing a relentless determination to grow and develop. Beyond intellectual prowess, August has also exhibited compassion and empathy towards peers and the wider community. Notably, August extended a helping hand to a struggling student earlier this year despite not having any personal connection, revealing exceptional character beyond academic excellence. Wow. RHS firmly believes that August is a deserving candidate for this recognition. Congratulations.
One, two, three, smile. Little more smile. And, thank you. Thank you.
Greetings, everyone. It is a magnificent pleasure for me to present tonight the Crystal Apple Award to two deserving staff members. They are both from Fullerton Four. So when I call up the person who's going to be the recipient, all of your support group and come and then you can stay for the next one. Okay. Also, I'd like to mention at this time, at the end of my presentation for the Crystal Apple Award, it is the board's desire that the students that receive the reward and the Crystal Apple awardees come and stand and the board members will take a group picture of all of us together. Okay, so don't leave until we get the picture taken. We have a rookie photographer tonight. So bear with her, okay? We all hear not to be perfection, but to do our best. We're here to bring honor to our students and our staff. Without you, we don't exist. We need you. It's a gracious honor to be here. Our first honoree tonight is Mr. Kevin South from third grade teacher from Fullerton Four. So all of the honorees, I'd like to join behind them. Check around behind them. Got it? Allow me to share with you what I've been told. The moment you meet Mr. South, you can instantly tell that some of his biggest influences are Mr. Rogers, Patch Adams. and all the doctors from Doctor Who. He is generous and empathetic. He is humorous and silly. He always tried to be nice and never failed to be kind. Everything Mr. South does is with kids in mind. He has organized a school garden, started a banana Graham Club at lunch, teaches kids to knit, invites members of the community to be guest speakers in his class. At recess, you can often find him walking the track with kids who are having a hard day and talking them through it. As teachers, we call the students in our class our kids. But Mr. South doesn't just do that with his class. He does it with all students at Fullerton Four. Once you have had Mr. South as a teacher or have been a student at Fullerton Four, you are one of his kids. He truly believes and lives the phrase, "It takes a village." Congratulations. Your Crystal Opera Award says unwavering consent, calm, caring, and compassionate the best. Don't drop it. And the next honoree from Fullerton Four is Bria Lauter, a skill trainer. That's why we got in the middle because we knew it was a bigger crowd. Oh, that's exciting. It's an honor to share with you what been told about you. You don't have to spend a long time at Fullerton to experience the magic that is Bria Lauter. She is equal parts assertive and loving, logical and passionate, empathetic, just and kind. Her presence alone provides peace and calm for students and staff. There is no call that needs answering, no students who needs comforting, no problem that needs solving that Bria cannot handle. She is the person you want in your corner on any given day. Bria is consistent, dependable, and loyal. And she could always tell you when the next full moon is happening. And with nearly 20 years of experience in education, Fullerton Four is fortunate that she has spent her last 13 years making this school her home. From working in the Learning Resource Center to the turnaround program, and now as a skills trainer, Bria has become an integral part of the culture and the ethics that make Fullerton Four unique. Bria makes the difference every day, one day at a time. Congratulations, Bria. Your Crystal Opera Award says unwavering, consistent, calm, caring, and compassionate. Be best. Now, if I can have the honorees and the students come back up and the rest of you sit down, the board will join and take a group picture. You have to stay, Bria. You have to stay. Board, come take a picture. That's what you wanted, right? You do it right now. Let's do it now. Ladies and gentlemen, on behalf of the school board of Roseburg School District, it's an honor and a pleasure that you have taken part of your busy schedule to come out and be with us tonight. As we honor our staff and our students, we're going to take a short intermission. If you'd like to be one of the speakers later on, make sure you fill out the cards so we can have it ahead of time. We may, we asked you to leave quietly and enjoy, but be safe out there. Have a great day. May God bless you. See you next trip.
Go ahead and call the meeting back to order. We'll wait for the superintendent and the assistant superintendent to take a seat. At this time, we're going to have public participation. Just a reminder, two minutes. I know it goes really fast. I apologize, but that's what we have. And Michelle, our assistant superintendent will time you. And are you ready to take it over, Michelle?
Absolutely. We have one individual that would like to comment, and that is Jeff Paschal. So please come on up to the microphone. We'll start the timer for two minutes. Right there. And you need to press the button and make sure the light is green, please.
It is green.
Perfect. Thank you so much.
Thank you for letting me address you. Really, my participation tonight was unplanned. I actually wasn't planning on showing up here tonight till about what, five o'clock? My wife said, let's go on a date. And here we are. I just wanted to bring up one subject. It's a seminar or workshop that's going up, that's going on at Roseburg High School this Friday and Saturday called Screen Strong. And I just wanted to appreciate that a number of the board members, Anne and a few others I've talked to have shown their support for it. And Screen Strong is basically a workshop addressing the social contagion, really the social blight that's really affecting our children on screen addiction. And so addiction to devices, addiction to tablets, video games, and the damage it's doing socially, emotionally, psychologically to our whole culture. And I just wanted to thank mostly Anne for promoting it. And I think we're, we got some sort of an announcement that ended up going out to the school district about that. Is that correct? Can I just thank everyone for supporting that? It's such a wonderful thing. And, and I'm not even the authority on it. I would think as a pastor of a church, I, I see obviously the blight because I see how children are being affected and how families are being torn apart with, you know, attention deficit children and others, but really the authority are the teachers. You, you teachers, if you're any teachers in this room, or if you're an administrator, you would, you would know this is an issue. It's a big issue. And I just want to thank the board and for people to support this and promoting it any way we can. Is there any other way we can promote it more between now and Friday? That's the only question I might have. Yeah. Anything else? That's really all I had to say. All right.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Okay, anyone else that? Sure, go ahead. You have, you know the times? Thank you.
Do you want to, whoa, man. Do you want to get that on the mic? So, so Friday, 6:00 PM at Roseburg High School, students, and then Saturday, 11:00 AM at Roseburg High School for students. I don't know what's up with the mic, or for parents, I'm sorry. Yeah. In the theater.
All righty, thank you guys very much. At this time, superintendent, review again and communications to the board.
Thank you very much, Chair Cotton. Actually, just one announcement tonight, that is, we will have an executive session that will immediately follow the regular meeting tonight. We have no changes to any action items on the agenda since its last publication.
We're going to move on to consent agenda. Remember, I'll need a motion and a second. You want discussion?
Motion to approve the 2-7 consent agenda.
A second.
We have a motion and we have a second for the consent agenda. Any discussion? Okay, let's call for the vote. All in favor? Post, okay, unanimous. The next one is a resolution 232410. Classified employee appreciation week, which is going to be March 4th through the 8th, 2024. And I have something I'd like to read. What is going on tonight? That's crazy. Classified school employees go above and beyond for Oregon schools every day. They keep Oregon students healthy, nourished, and learning no matter what. While their work is often unrecognized, these dedicated several servants do important jobs that are essential to our schools. This classified school employee week, we would like to share our heartfelt gratitude with all of our hardworking classified staff members. These individuals work in the following areas. The library, maintenance, office, security, warehouse, computer, technical, custodial, educational support, and food services. We know that these folks make a difference today and every day, and we thank them for all that they do. And I will tell you that I'm not going to go into the, my story of my fifth grade teacher, as I should, but I remember those custodians, I remember the office folks. I remember a little first grader getting pushed down, thought I was surrounding in a mud puddle and having the office gal, Mrs. Gordon, take care of me. I remember my mother working 30 plus years as a cook, 27 years of those at Joseph Lane. We would not make it without the help of our custodians and our cafeteria folks and all, all the classified employees. And I just want to thank you so much. Any other discussions before comments before we vote?
Um, I also was just, when I saw that this is the week that we want to acknowledge our classified, it's, I, I feel strongly too that they need to be acknowledged and we do deeply appreciate the work that they do. And we just would encourage you to keep working. We're, we're making a difference in our kids' lives and we, we know your part is very important. So thank you.
And I know I got out of sequence a little bit, but I will need a motion and a second.
Oh, check, 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 check. I don't want to kill everybody with my voice. Motion to approve resolution 23-24-10 to be celebrated March 4th through 8th of this year.
I will second that.
Further discussion? Okay, let's call for the vote. All in favor? Aye. Post. Thank you so much. Uh, we're going to move into reports section and this time. There he is, Thomas.
Thank you for the welcome there. Again, I'm Thomas McGregor, the executive director of the Phoenix School of Roseburg. Uh, we're here with our quarterly report and this quarter is the annual review. We'll be looking at the 2223 year. Uh, my presentation will briefly go through these slides to allow for discussion. Uh, also Principal Birkin sends her best regards. She's home recovering from an illness. Uh, next slide, please. So again, uh, the charter contract signed in 2020 guides the majority of the slides tonight. Uh, with discussions recently with board leadership also led to the addition of some new slides in the slide deck that weren't previously there last year. And so those will be after the slides that you've seen every year of the contract for the annual review. Again, the academic standards are there, the goals to increase attendance, the goals to increase uh, rates of high school success through completion of GED or diploma. And again, the curriculum and instruction leading to growth in math and English. Uh, and then we have our data sources there. Next slide, please. So some important notes about last school year, uh, we did start with a sudden transition of So some important notes about last school year. We did start with a sudden transition of building leadership in August of 2022. We were really grateful to have Principal Birkins, who transitioned from the Roseburg Virtual School as a sped teacher, come over to Phoenix and take on this role. Also to note is that we, of the 17 faculty members, we had nine that were new to Phoenix Charter School. So the beginning of last year, we had strong history of faculty retention to the years leading up to that year. But suddenly, we have nine new teachers in our building. Six of those were new to taking the leadership of a classroom in that year. And then you can see some overall data that was pulled from synergy that we provided every year. Next slide. So the contract negotiated and agreed upon included these comparable schools. And so what these comparable schools do is provide us data of similar programs coming from similar communities of size to Roseburg and also that serve a similar type student. So again, the nonprofit mission of the Phoenix School is to serve at-risk youth, which is actually a special education definition at risk of school failure, and that is our IRS mandated mission. And so I'm gonna go on with the next slide there. You can see the schools that are, have been identified in the contract. This brings us to the contract language. I just want to make sure that the, that we're all, when we went to the negotiation table in 2020, the board and many of the discussions leading up to the contract was we, we need to make sure the contract and the next contract period is something that we're always visiting, that we're always remembering, and those goals that we set together when we authored the contract. So here is the first standard for the academic standards that we review every year. This is focused on the attendance of the students and seeking to increase the amount of students attending 90% of the time. Next slide. And here we get to our first data slide of the evening. We have, you can see the baseline of 23%. That is a year that's outside of the contract. And then unfortunately, the first year of the contract was the pandemic year there, and we don't, or actually, the, yeah, so there's, there's, there's a, the first, the baseline year is actually 1920, and the first year we have data is 1819 to inform the contract. And so we have that data in there. And you can see we have steadily increased the attendance of students who are attending 90% of the time in 2020 to 23. Next slide, you can see now we've arrived at a, one of the comparable school graphs. And you can see all the names of the schools there. Plymouth, that's in St. Helens. West Lane, that's in Veneta. Innovations, that's in the DOWs. Armadillo, that's in Phoenix. Falcons Heights, that's in the Calamith region. And then you have Phoenix Charter there on the extreme right. I would note the size of the cohorts. This is the only slide that shows how many students are involved. And it is interesting to note now, the Innovations Academy in the DOWs, which used to be a very small program, and you'll see that later in their cohort data for the graduation numbers, but they've now taken on a K-12 mission. So their student size grew trying enormously there to 204 students in the last year. And it's, it's interesting to see a lot of the schools, the majority of the schools, were still working to achieve the, a level of attendance with the at-risk population that we were achieving prior to the pandemic. So you can see that there with Plymouth, West Lane, and some of the others. So, next slide, please. Moving on, we see that the contract language defines the 2223 year as exceeding standard. That's because we increased four to seven percentage points from the previous year. And so that is the contract language, and that is what is determined by that language. But you can see also the data, the data compared to the median, we have room to grow to get to in line with our peers. Next slide, please. So we are now at the, the, the second performance standard. This is the four-year completed, four-year cohort completed data. The contract was authored to reflect the nature of the school's mission. So we included the GED outcome. It's not the grad rate, it's completer dated that the contract has us assess. So next slide, we have our, our, our data here for goal two. You can see that 29 of the 67 students in the four-year cohort achieved a GED or diploma or modified diploma. It's to note that 15 students continued with Phoenix Charter the next year. And you can see it's a continuation of the trend line coming from the base year prior to the contract. Next slide. So you can see now our comparable schools again. And it's interesting to note, you kind of get a feel for each of these communities and their capacity and the type of students and the demographics in those communities and who is going to an at-risk school there. Because the clusters of the data are somewhat similar year to year in the comparables. And it is interesting, you know, as educators, we get students 30 hours a week. The community gets them 114 hours a week. But let's go to the next slide. You'll see that the contract language dictates that the 2223 year means that the school did not meet its contractual standard. We did, we decreased one to five percentage points, going from 45% to 43%. But again, I, the, with all the changes, we were right where we were in the neighborhood of, of recent years. And so it's good that at least the school is holding strong as it works to grow. We're moving on to the next slide. And again, the contract language here for performance C. The contract has this also focus on the five-year cohort. The, the, this is the four-year numbers combined with the five-years numbers is the way I interpret the ODE data to operate. And we did this with the contract because we wanted to show the nature of the school. Students up to 20 years of age can enroll in Phoenix Charter School and be served. And so we do have a lot of five-year students. Moving on to the next slide. You'll see the data related to the five-year cohort. The trend line is, is still progressing, but again, we did not have a year of growth. We had a year similar to the year prior, but not of growth, but the trend holds. So going on to the next slide, you can see now the comparable schools. You can see the capacity and the outcomes of these, of these communities. And you can see those cohort sizes, like for example, the, the Innovations Academy, which now has a population of 204 students, still only had a population of the high school where they were expected to graduate at 29 students for the cohort. Moving on to the next slide, we'll, we'll see the trend lines over the life of the contract and prior to the contract. And you can see the, the data there is below the median. So we did not meet standard when compared to the median. And we did not meet standard because we degreased from the previous year by one to four percentage points. So it informs us the 2223 year did not meet contractual standard. Moving on to the next slide, we have again the contract language to remind us and guide us. And these next two standards, the last two standards of the academic standards, they are based on internal testing systems. When we authored the contract, we wanted all students of the charter school to be reflected in are they improving in their grade level? Whereas state testing data can be limited to a narrow population of the students. That was at the negotiation table, what was guiding us in authoring these standards. And you can see from the contract language there, we are to use internal testing systems that give us a great equivalent score. And then we're, we're there to see a pre and a post assessment. So test the students at least twice in the year and be able to understand if they are demonstrating growth in one grade level. And the first standard looks at the English language arts. Next slide. So according to the contract language and the data that we were able to procure from the internal testing data systems, which achieved 78 students to do an efficient pre and post test. The team was able to demonstrate 55% of those students demonstrating a growth of one grade level in English language arts. Next slide, please. Again, here is the testing language. The, the contract is the same between English language arts and math. But it's just the different subjects areas. So I'm gonna move on to the next slide quickly. For pre and post for mathematics, we were able to achieve 80 students pre and post testing. And the contract informs us, the, the school met standard in 2223 with 60% of the students demonstrating a, a grade level increase. I was somebody who spent one late, late night last week doing this data. So I have now seen all of the grade data for all the students of the school. And it is interesting data. A lot of the data is students at the grade equivalent level, increasing from the second grade level to the sixth grade level, or increasing from the fourth grade level to the fifth grade level. A lot of students are increasing in their percentile with their peers in the nation. They max out the test at their grade level 12.9. I was amazed at the over almost two dozen students who are at such a high grade level equivalent. The other thing I noticed, a lot of pre tests and not follow-up with post tests. My data team wants to look at, because we have so many GED students, when the student GED finishes, it's really hard to get them to take one more test. So maybe we need to sit down and propose with the district leadership team. May the GED practice tests and final scores demonstrate for us grade level equivalent increases. And so that's something I wanna focus on before next annual review. I'm gonna move on to the next slide now. Uh, next, and reminder on these graphs, these are data for discussion. They're not formally defined in the contract as an academic objective, but they were requested by district and board leadership to be included in the presentation. The two lines you can see there, the one that starts at 64%, that is the ninth graders on track to graduate. And then that is the four-year grad rate. So those are the students who only achieved a standard diploma from Phoenix Charter School, and that data is holding consistent throughout the life of the contract. Next slide. Uh, next, I was at, these are some of the new slides that we've not seen in prior years. These is some data that was provided to me kindly by Assistant Superintendent Michelle Nie to be added for our discussion this evening. You can see we have data for Roseburg High School, Phoenix Charter School, and then the state average there on the right. You can see that Phoenix is pillared by the state average and Roseburg High School there in its ability. First, with a two-year average was the data provided to me around regular attenders. Again, those are those who attend 90% of the time. And then a three-year average for four-year grad rate, which is not including the GED, but only the standard diploma. And so the Phoenix students are at 15% on the average there and 30% in the average for the four-year grad rate. Moving on, trying to, to the next data slide. On this again was provided to me. This is the Oregon State Assessment System data. And so this is data, my understanding, is 11th grade students who participate in the testing. There is an asterisk here on the math data for Phoenix School. The data value was reported less than 5%. And I could not figure out how to do that in Microsoft Excel. So it's just sitting there at 5%. We, you can see there again, Roseburg High School, Phoenix Charter, and state average data, and the, the charter school dwarfed by the peers around the state for their abilities. Moving on, I was also in discussions recently with Chair Cotton and Superintendent Corden, and we, we decided we wanted to get a sense of the demographic data. And I'll be honest, I had never done this. I had never looked at Roseburg High School's demographic data. And it was interesting to note that when it looks at this graph and we look at economically disadvantaged students, we are a very similar population under the definition of the Oregon Department of Education. When they look at students and they define economic disadvantage, you're seeing that 98% of Roseburg High School and 95% of Phoenix School students are defined this way. So we have very similar populations in that. Moving through left to right on the graph, you'll see there is the high school success of the economic disadvantaged students of the five-year cohort. The reason I looked at the five-year cohort data is this is in the cohort media file. It's a separate webpage on the ODE website, and it is a very comprehensive data presentation that gives data down to the individual level. And so you can then next see students with disabilities. You'll see that Roseburg High School, the demographic is 10% of the students are students with disabilities. And Phoenix Charter School is 20% of the students with disabilities. Moving on forward, we have then homeless students. And you will see that Phoenix School is at 26% homeless according to the ODE data, while Roseburg High School is at 3%. So Phoenix School is working with five times percentage-wise the number of homeless students. I will note, looking at the individual level, the levels of numbers of students, Phoenix is a larger number, but not by much. So as a percentage-wise, it's much greater. But on an individual level and the homeless student numbers, they are somewhat similar. Moving on to the last slide before getting into our summary and looking ahead. I thought it was also helpful to look at the individual level. So this data graph here shows us the number of individuals in the 2223 year who were four-year completers, five-year completers, but also the number of individuals who are non-completers from each of our institutions. And so I felt this was a rich data set from, again, the media file. It, you know, it, it shows the amount of individuals who leave our, our, our building at the end of the school year and go into the community remaining a need to seek out high school success. I, I wanna show with this percent, this data that you know, it's not percentages, it's exact outcomes. And you know, Phoenix is unsuccessful in completing almost 40 individuals, but did provide the community with 30 individuals who came to a school for at-risk of school failure and did complete. Now move into the summary slides and I'll go through them briefly. Basically, the summary, looking ahead, we are seeing Douglas Community households continue to choose Phoenix School. These are students with complex barriers, so economic disadvantage, homelessness, mental health challenges, and/or disabilities to explore their route and another choice to gain high school success for their student. You will see in the 2223 data that there are trend lines moving in the right direction continually with further need for internal system improvements to reduce barriers to regular attendance and skill level improvements. I believe the key strategic targets are instructional leadership, student progress monitoring, investment in tech solutions, household involvement and student-led, student barrier reduction mechanisms. So getting that voice of the household in to understand what they need to get success is translating that. And then also further investment in Phoenix's internal employment programs. Phoenix now, the parent nonprofit operates the workforce investment, workforce investment board contract for individuals 16 to 24 to gain investment through the Workforce Innovation Act. Uh, next slide, please. So looking at goal one. These goals are outlined by Principal Birkins. She has been led by Director Weber. Thank you. I just wanted to say Jill, I apologize. I had to get the last name there. And she has done this through all of the schools to come up with a school improvement plan. So I felt, you know, again, that tenor that we struck at the negotiations, Phoenix is the 13th school in the district. Let's, let's do as all the other schools do. And so let's talk about Phoenix School in the district mechanism of a school improvement plan. You can see we've identified our system implementation. So looking at re-engagement systems, looking at making sure that we're continuously monitoring the students, looking at how we, or excuse me, directing and coordinating how we achieve phone calls, meetings to re-engage students with board attendance, excuse me. And then also increasing the life and vitality of the campus. We have new to us a D and D club. That is so awesome. They're such amazing young men. We have a grappling club, a Hispanic club, and a continuation of our chess club. And we're also again focused on those employment experiences. So the Community Health Core Program, the Farmer School Program, and the continuation of the Oregon Conservation Core Program. Moving on to the next slide, we talk about your second goal is increasing completion rates for the various diplomas available at our building. Having those milestone check-ins, we are a high school with pathways or a homeroom that meets every day. And so that connection with that adult to have a developmental relationship, but also be that guidance counselor to, and then making sure we have uniformed systems for all these amazing guidance counselors who are also social studies teachers, also science teachers. That's not their primary job. But giving them that relationship with the student, but then also giving them the tools to be good at that work. And so what we've created, we're Phoenix, we take flights, we have our flight plan committee, we are working directly with the the amazing team at the state for getting our career information system platform retooled. Also adopting the Oregon employability schools, which have been led by the Willema ESD and using our Canvas capacity, not to have all students in every class on Canvas, but for it to be a learning management system for students to track their outcomes across classes. So the Oregon employability skills include things such as communication. So I'm working in the So I'm working in the kitchen or I'm working in the computer lab. Both of those teachers can see my Oregon employability skills and capture my standard achievement of those items. Uh, also making sure we have our credit recovery options. Uh, and then we are looking to, um, further, uh, refine and revisit how we do online course completion. We have students who want to get on, uh, what we've always called loft or learning on the fast track. That was a program that started in the, the fifth floor of the Pacific Building. That's how it's got its name loft, but it's learning on the fast track. And we're wanting to see how we can make students learn independently through Canvas, through Odysseyware, and get them ahead and get them towards their diploma. Next slide, almost through folks, uh, goal three here, uh, improvement in English and math. So curriculum assessment inventory, uh, Principal Birkins is, um, very much, uh, getting all of her faculty through the Atlas software system. We do not subscribe to an outside curriculum. As a charter school, it's our duty to innovate, create our own, uh, uh, curriculum. But at the same time, we are seen in year forty three as an institution. We need to make sure we have all the gifts that we've, we've, we've achieved with how we do business with our type of student. We want, we want to create our own curriculum. So teachers, new and old, at least we can map out where their standards are happening and map out, uh, the, the ways that Phoenix does business well. So student engagement, we have added a TOSA Dean of Students. We are having, uh, an incredible educator added to our team who starts April first. The goal of this is to, uh, have our principal have the capacity to do that instructional leadership and have an individual do that, uh, restorative discipline and all of those systems. Um, and so next, uh, technology integration, again, the Canvas tool, making sure we have the right hardware in classes. And lastly, pathways engagement, or excuse me, parent engagement. So those homeroom teachers lead those efforts, but making sure we have strong, uh, tracking and tools that guide milestones in the year to make sure all the members of the school community are engaging the households. Last, looking to twenty four, twenty five, I'm on the last slide now, Michelle. Thank you. No, no, I have one before that, I apologize. Thank you. Uh, so the twenty four, twenty five, um, where the leadership is focused, we're really focused on professional development. So wanting to make sure we are, are building leaders throughout our team. We are working on our trauma informed, uh, practices adoption. Um, and so continuing that work with our outside contractor. Also working again on the Atlas, the curriculum mapping tools and, uh, the engagement monitoring systems. Uh, regular monitoring, so embedded approaches for progress monitoring towards each strategic goal with the instructional leadership team, which is a great model that you all have provided us with the five D uh, model, and thank you for that leadership that is an tremendous model. We have professional development today led by our teachers, and it's just a great thing to behold. Uh, investment in technology, so making sure the board is, is very concerned with this directing to make sure we're getting that testing done. We're allowing to have some online learning and to make sure we are having that data so we can make sure the classes we're picking for the course schedule, make sure our teachers know who's in front of them and do the excellent work that we need to be doing. And lastly, enhance our communication strategies. Uh, we are working on communication plans for students, parents, staff, and wanting to further our existing bridges to partners and projects. In a recent meeting, um, I'm on the last slide now, thank you. In a recent meeting, again, with, uh, Chair, um, Chair Cotton and Superintendent Corden, it, you know, there was a question, uh, proposed to us and, and I'm just going to read it because I think it is really a great question. We want to hear your perception of how the charter students are performing. And I believe myself and past predecessors, we, we, we've done that. But I, and not to say that we've done that and it's, you know, but no, but more, that is exactly what we need to be doing here every quarter. And, and you know, at first we went to like, okay, how can we show that in some data? So as we, as we say that, we know that we're coming from a place that's, it's actually data informed. Principal Birkins, when she went into the data system to look at twenty two, twenty three, she of course was seeing the twenty three, twenty four data. And that's what you're seeing there in that very, very complex line graph. Those are all the different cohorts. So the eighth graders, the ninth graders, the tenth graders, eleventh graders, the twelfth graders combined, um, as, as considered class of twenty four, um, no matter what their previous cohort was. And you can see, you know, I believe we're seeing the right trend of the lines of where the student achievement is at when these data systems. And so, um, we, we wanted to demonstrate that, uh, because that was something that she felt, here's my perception that, you know, I'm, I'm testing the kids regularly and I'm, I'm seeing that they're demonstrating growth. Uh, and for me, the, the perception is the students, um, they're, they're, I, I'm, I'm an educator who's, who's led through a pandemic. I, I don't want to mention that the rest of my career, but it is definitely a battle scar. And it is very, very, very awesome right now. I am perceiving, I have a community of students who are connecting with their peers. They're engaging in school based activities and they're students connecting with the dedicated educators at our school and therefore connecting with their studies. Lastly, I have students who are connecting with their future. We have students again attending U C C regularly, whether that be after their diploma or in the Friday Academy and attending our youth core program and, and achieving with those type of employment programs that are part of the high school setting. And above all, we are helping these students define a plan for their future that's tangible and something that they can hold and use once they leave Phoenix. Thank you. There is my presentation this evening and I have now any discussions.
Um, I, I have a quick question. Can you explain what Canvas is?
Thank you. Um, yes, Canvas is a learning management system. It's used by universities and I believe it's used by Rosenberg High School as well. And so that's a system that students, um, it's like a password protected. And then there's things called Canvas shells, which are like their courses. And the, and it has all their assignments in them. We're more using them and I apologize for the reference, uh, but like, kind of like a merit badge system. So when you think of the employability skills, how can I demonstrate all of this employability skill? And then those are things that other mentors can go into the system and document and credit how they've done that. But the other way we have it is, uh, there's Odysseyware, which is like a preloaded s- uh, software for like a math class or an English class. And we can crosswalk that into Canvas and it can be a place where they can communicate with their teacher even better. Or the teacher can create their own way of supplementing the, the work from Odysseyware. Thank you.
You, you mentioned, uh, that I think that your preference would be more internal testing rather than using standardized testing?
Thank you, Director Krimmets for that question. What I was referring to earlier, I believe, was the sentiment at the negotiation table and how we authored the contract. And that, my recollection of the sentiments at the negotiation table were that the, the, the state assessment data does provide some data to lead us. But we were wanting all students at any grade level to be captured into the contract for study to see if we're meeting the academic objectives. And so that's what I was referring to before. Does that make sense?
Uh, yes, but it, um, I, I was also wondering, like you said, a student might progress from second grade level reading to sixth grade reading. Um, and, you know, identifying that as significant progress. Uh, do you? Does that qualify them as, as being exceeding expectations?
That is an excellent, that's an excellent clarifying question. Yes, under the contract language, the goal is to have students increase inability in a grade level. So it's, if they're, if they're going from second grade level to third grade level, the contract language would define that that is somebody who has met standard. If that makes sense.
So on form standard D and E, their test scores, these are not the same standardized tests that everybody else takes. These are your guys' internal tests?
Thank you, um, Director Shirkcliff, that's a great question. Um, yes, so this is the STAR three sixty, uh, testing system that we worked with district leadership at the time, I believe in like eighteen, nineteen, maybe nineteen, twenty, to, to identify a testing system that we could use regularly. Um, one of the things that we, uh, noted, uh, back then, um, what was it? Smarter Balance was the name of that testing system at the time. It was a very involved testing system that was only available in May and took multiple hours, whereas the SAR three sixty test can take anywhere from just thirty to forty minutes to get a result to give us information about the study, student. And so that was kind of, and this, uh, software is led by the A C T company.
Okay, so do you guys participate in the state testing and do that also?
Yes, as you'll see in the data slide for the Oregon State Assessment Data that highlighted, um, Phoenix, Rosenberg High School and the, and the state average. We do, as mandated, have to participate with our eighth graders and our eleventh graders in the statewide assessment data.
Okay, and then last one here. On these D and E ones, you have seventy eight students and eighty students participating in this test, but your attendance thing says you have like a hundred and sixty three students or something. Where is the data for the rest of the students?
That is an excellent question. And as I, um, tried to highlight earlier, but it might have been confusing, my apologies. What I was finding when I went into the data system, I was finding two trends. Students who had taken a pre test, who were a GED student and therefore that they didn't take a post test because they were, they were tested. GED students test a lot in nature, they're always taking practice tests, um, GED tests. And either we can do one of two things, I believe, moving forward. We either need to count the GED test results towards the, the, the inner, the internal testing assessment or convince a student who's just taken four tests to take one more test before they leave the building. And so that does seem to be a challenge at this time. And then also I think the rationale, because, you know, as we sat here and as we've talked directly with you, Director Shirkcliff, Principal Birkins was very committed. She committed a staff member to the testing. Um, but we're seeing also signs and symptoms of our reengagement population and not getting that student to take that second test. And I can't, I don't think in good faith, give data to you all unless I have as the contract man, mandates, a pre and a post assessment. So there's more students that have testing done, but they didn't reach the, the, the ability for me to grade them as either meeting the standard or not by not having a pre and a post assessment.
Okay, so less than half your students have a pre and a post test?
So, and, and I will, I will be honest to point it out. If you go to, I think slide number three and you go to the synergy data, you will see that over two hundred and fifty students went through my door. So a hundred and seventy students was my average daily membership, but the number of students who went through my door. So I have concerns, not at that level of half, but only. You see where now my attention is.
Year and a quarter now, yeah.
Yeah, but, but I, I think what I, I need to have us focus on is sometimes we only have a student for two weeks, but that still counts there, you know, and I've tried to cut it off at two weeks. But, you know, we're, we are the reengagement school and we have students who bounce in and out of us or we're the last stop in, in their K twelve experience before they go on to life and decide no longer to pursue K twelve.
I, I, I can't do it, sorry. Since, send us an email or a call us or something. We, we need to stay on the, sorry. Okay.
I was looking at the very first slide and, um, where it says seventeen faculty members, nine new teachers and six of them first year teachers. Why, why is that? Why? I mean, that's, that's a lot of teachers, um, you know, in one year, what happened and what, what could be done, what, what happened?
I, I, I definitely agree. Thank you, Director Leone. That is a very important question. The prior years, we had had extremely low ten, uh, turnover. Going into the pandemic, I was seeing the, the typical attrition of one to two staff members. As you may recognize, this is a time where we're going through inflation. This is a time where we're going through, uh, the pandemic. A lot of my educators just wanted to change. They moved on from Phoenix after a long time. While I say nine, nine new to Phoenix, there was some midyear departures. And so then some new teachers came in, so there wasn't nine, there was nine teachers new to Phoenix. But if that makes sense, like two left, two came in. So then they all four were new to Phoenix, if that makes sense, um, in that data set. But a- again, to answer your question, um, it was an abnormal year. Going into twenty three, twenty four, we did not have, we had again, that normal level of attrition, one to faculty, not that level. It was, it was kind of like, uh, and as an economist would call kind of like pent up energy that finally just released and that was my experience. That's an excellent question as well. I repeat it because I don't believe it was caught on microphone. I believe the director asked me, how are the stu, how are the faculty credentialed? Are they credentialed with, uh, licenses that are normal to other teachers? Uh, that's a great question. Uh, as a charter school in the state of Oregon, we are legally obligated to have fifty point one percent of our faculty traditionally licensed at all times. And so we maintain a ratio to meet that obligation. All the other faculty have to go through a process which is called Charter Registry. And so we work with the standard, the Teacher Standards and Practices Commission to submit their pedigree, their, their, you know, like we would do with all other faculty, their, their credentials. There are individuals that only have associate's degrees. There are individuals that have ten years of, of career experience. And I believe that is because as a charter school to obtain Charter Registry, that's guided by the Every Student Succeeds Act, the federal legislature and how it defines how charter schools are supposed to function in our nation. And so, um, it's an interesting process. It's not an exact science, a lot of send it in and get a response and, and learn from T S P C. But did I answer your question there? Thank you.
We're gonna wrap up here, but one, one more question.
With that regard, um, so are, are those, since those are fairly inexperienced, you know, teacher, teaching, um, are they very active in attending our uh, leadership development with the five K? The, you know, our, our standards that we are teaching our teachers to improve them as leaders? Are they, I would hope that they're there, you know, a lot since they have so little really educator experience?
Um, that's a great question, Director Krimmets. What I'm hearing from you is first, do our teachers attend district professional developments? That happens in off my, offhand, I believe, two fashions. I, as a leader, I attend district leadership. I attend, uh, uh, secondary admin meetings and Principal Birkins attends those as available as well. But the question more pointed at faculty, sped faculty or special education faculty do go to the district for professional development at times. But all of our faculty attend our professional development in our building. We do send our faculty to the five D leadership and we are following in suit with the five B leadership model. That's how we are doing evaluations and how we are coaching through our noticing's, wonderings, ideal states. We are, we are working to be in step with the district in those systems, if that makes sense. Because we also believe we fall under the strategic plan of the district to rise up leaders as, as you all have, uh, set, uh, as a great strategic goal. And we are following that strategic goal as well, and that's how we do that. Did I answer your question?
Thank you.
Thank you, Board Directors, for your questions. I'm going to leave with one question. I'm probably really going to start asking this at, in the, in the every check in that we have. And the question is, are you satisfied with the growth of the students at Phoenix Charter School?
Again, that, that's, that's the essential question, Director Cotton. For me, it's a mixed bag. I, I know these students directly. I see growth in them, I see connection to a school community. Um, and I, I am proud of those. And I I am proud of those individuals that I see the second or the first Tuesday of every June. And so I am very proud of our student population. I am very proud of our student body and how those who get future oriented, overcome barriers, they are achieving. But no, I would like to see this data be presented in a way that these lines are a little bit more aggressively advancing. And I think the three goals that we've stated here today and the questions here were very good in nature, that are we advancing our ability to lead our faculty, to lead our students, to lead them to be able to achieve as students? I would like to see more. I would like to see our system and our building giving more of an outcome in two factors. One, that engagement to school and two, that engagement to school that students are are self determining what to do with that experience and achieving with that. So I'll leave you with that, Director Cotton.
Thank you very much for coming.
Thank you. Appreciate it as well.
But we have one more, one more question.
Sorry, I was just trying to wrap my head around a certain issue. So I mean, it it seems like there's a vast difference between the ELA and math achievement in the standards D and E and the state assessment data. And I know you mentioned earlier year or two ago, maybe a year ago, that there was a high turnover. I ju, I just want to ask what, what do you, why do you think there is that vast difference there?
Thank you, Director Hammison. I think that's a very astute question. I think you're looking at the 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 testing data that is is centered on the eighth and eleventh graders. And then the testing data for the academic objectives, again, as was, I forget which director kind of focused in on was the the contract is written in a way to show growth and grade level. So I went through all the testing data. I have got a lot of students who are in testing at lower elementary levels. And we are getting them upwards into middle school levels. And so while those students are showing growth for the contract, I do not believe they would be showing a preferable standard or outcome for the Oregon Assessment data that's directed at the high school level. Does that make sense? One showing growth, one is showing meeting the high school standard. Thank you.
We will move on with Superintendent's report. Okay.
All right. Thank you, Director Cotton and Directors. I have a short report for you tonight. Thank you, Michelle, for emceeing tonight on the slides there. I, before I start, though, I do want to just thank the staff here and our staff that are with us tonight. Also want to thank Stephanie, Steph's online. Steph, we can't see you, but I want to thank, thanks, Steph, for taking great care of the board with you know, all the setup and dinner. I just want to thank Matt tonight. Running the records, cutting records over there for us and keeping our mics going. Thank you. And then just thank the Fullerton staff for hosting tonight and thank all of our staff. We've got Ed, Ryan, folks here, just making sure we have a a good night. So thank you to everybody. This slide, we can go back side there, Michelle. Next slide is trying to run it on my side. We have amazing people. I, every time I have a chance to be in a building, we're sit down with one of our educators, one of our leaders, one of our teachers, sit down with a parent, I am reminded, so now board members, that we have incredible people working with our kids. We have incredible kids, amazing parents. And we are always, you know, trying to find ways to better engage and connect and support. And sometimes we get in the the focus on improvement, improvement, improvement. That's really critical. But when we pause for a minute and step back, I just want to say how grateful I am to work in a place that has such amazing people. I often think and have to remind myself that every day over five thousand children are trusted in our care and parents trust us enough to send the most important thing they have to make sure that they're, you know, and and we want to make sure that those kids are taken care of. And I'm so thankful for our staff who focuses on that, for a board who focuses on that and for a community who focuses on that. So thank you, everybody, including the board, our staff, our community, our kids for being amazing. Give you a couple of quick examples. We've got kids doing great things. Every day, there are kids doing great things. We always try to pick out a couple of things to highlight kids and staff and in our community. And here's just a couple of things. We had Reese, we have great donations. We love our community. We had some wood that was recently donated. And RHS Woodshop students were helping support a needed item. We needed Lego trays in elementary school. So here are our high school kids working to make that happen. We had a great partnership with recent Umpqua Fishery Enhancement Derby where our kids at Eastwood who take a a lot of pride and supporting that estuary they live in the in in the stream there that got to get out on boats and have a great experience there. That's all part of the learning experience we try to create for kids. We've got middle school students that are helping in many ways, and there's a couple here for you. So thanks to our kids doing great things, Michelle. Next there, thanks. We could focus on any group of staff that are doing great things tonight. I just wanted to send a special shout out to our CTE teachers. Want to highlight our high school C teachers. We have C teacher, CTE teachers at our middle schools as well. I want to focus on RHS for just a few minutes. We, this is a group of our CT instructors. They're amazing, dedicated, talented, industry involved folks that are really doing great work. And everything from carpentry and welding to culinary arts and other things. Really neat to point out here that students that earn at least one credit in CTE, Roseburg High School, graduate at a rate of higher than ninety five percent. So our CT programs are really critical. We, of course, are flexing with an additional intention on advanced manufacturing and advanced healthcare type of those pathways. Again, we could pick out any group of folks, but tonight just want to spend a, send a special thanks to our CTT, our CTE teachers as February is our CTE month. All right, a couple of things on sports here for you tonight. We are and have been involved and will now be involved in a conference realignment. This is not just college football. That happened for a different reason, but we are moving to a conference realignment. The decision on the realignment sits with O S double A and their executive board. And we have been approved. We did file a petition. And for consideration, we have received approval to move to a different conference. That conference will involve teams in Eugene. They're listed here Churchill, North and South Eugene, Willamette, Thurston, Springfield, Crater, and Eagle Point. So we'll be playing a little bit north, a little bit south, but we'll have kind of the I five corridor again. We're excited for the competition that we'll have there. It'll be great for us. And this is for high school football only for two years. Does have a couple of caveats. If we win the state championship, we have to kind of do some reconsideration and and some other things. But I'm excited for the opportunity to compete with those schools moving forward. Also wanted to let the board know, in case you didn't know, we've recently hired a new football head football coach, Matt Watson, will be, has taken over as the new head coach for Roseburg High School. All right, on the theme of sports, we are working diligently. We've got contractors. It's a busy work site on our softball field. We're very excited about this. It's nearing completion. We put a target date of February twentieth for completion. There's lots of work happening right there. We have contractors working on dugouts right now. We do have the scoreboard. We're hoping that that installation will begin by the end of the week. We have other work happening, fencing is going up, bleachers are coming. It's all going to come together, we think, right around the twentieth. We're hoping to get our conciliation agreement signed off by the state. And we're, we have a fantastic community facility that will really benefit our kids. As you're aware, and I appreciate your willingness to relook at our corporate advertising policy. I sent a press release out this week that we are officially seeking sponsors, a corporate sponsor that has been welcomed by a number of organizations who, right now, I've met with three or four. More are interested and we're meeting with them. There's a a high interest. I hope the next time we run a bond, we have as much interest in this support that we do for this facility. But again, this will be an important partnership to ensure that this investment is a generational investment. The turf is about a ten to thirteen year lifespan. And we're hoping, I am hoping to have a sponsorship that would ensure its viability long past my existence here on this earth. All right, one other quick update for you. Last side of the day here is this. I want to give you a quick update on the Budget Committee. We currently have five opening, or excuse me, three openings on our Budget Committee. And we have received five letters of interest to serve on the committee. We will be accepting applications and want the community to know that. We welcome applications from the community. We are excited people want to join our Budget Committee. Those letters of interest will be accepted through March first, and I will be bringing those names forward to the Board of Directors at the March thirteenth Business Meeting. And so we anticipate a full Budget Committee this year and excited for that process. And Directors, that's all I have tonight.
Thank you. It's now time for Board of Education reports, individual directors.
I don't have anything this evening.
Okay, I do. I am impressed with our kids and we, Board members received really nice, really huge thank you cards from the Fremont Leadership Team. And these letters or these cards were very insightful and and these kids did their homework. I mean, it was specific to each board member and their activities. I was really impressed with that. And then the cherry on top was tonight with the kids bringing, doing the presentation. We are raising leaders and then our students from the high school that come to give the reports. When I was in high school in Eugene, I actually was on the Board of Directors doing the same thing. And then fast forward years later, and here I am on a board. So these kids are doing things that are going to impact their lives forever and in our communities.
So we'll probably be doing a a building and sites in the next two or three weeks. So I should have an updated report on that. But I did want to ask Jared this football, since I'm the football fan, I got to ask these questions. So this football.
I, you know, I I think it will, so we're moving to a five A. And so how that works, it really, I mean, it depends. The way that the classifications work is is you can petition to play up if you're a small school. So giving example, Jesuit High School, for example, plays up. They've got about nine hundred students. It doesn't always, you know, with certain sports. I I think, you know, basketball is a situation where you've got, you know, five on the court. Obviously, football, we've got eleven on the field on each side. So I think it it could provide that. I think it will provide that as we grow this program to what we hope it becomes, which is I, you know, my goal is to make sure when kids come in, they have a fantastic experience on the field that they grow as is in for football, in this case, they grow as young individuals. They grow under love for the game. They get the training and skills they need. And I think that I think we will be competitive. And I think this this reclassification allows us to be competitive. In order to qualify to move, you have to have one fewer than, I think, twenty two percent of your games over two years. And we were under that threshold. And so I was not on the football team. I was a participant. I mean, I was a, I was a visitor to the games. And I think there will be an excitement to play some new teams. And I do think we will be competitive, I hope immediately. But some of these schools are have great athletes. The size of your school sometimes doesn't matter. Some of these schools will have as many D one athletes in the sport as we have. And so I I do believe it will help the momentum of a rebuild for us in in football. Back we win, I think if we win the first, I think if we win past the first round of the playoffs, that they'll reconsider that. I think that's O S double A rigs. I hope we can do that. But again, the goal is, remember, there are student athletes in that order. And their students first and their athletes second. And so we would love what athletics and activities brings to a kid's development. But we want kids to have a an expert. I want kids to win as well. But I want kids mostly to have an experience where they can feel like that they're growing and they're achieving. And I think the conference realignment, I do appreciate O S double A's consideration of this because I do think it's, that's kind of a a direction for momentum about participating. I think it could provide kid, more students with the interest of playing and participating. And so I do think we'll be more competitive for several, you know, for several years moving ahead. But I think this is a good strategic move for us. I support.
And may I add, there are already two schools in this conference that are playing down Willamette and South Eugene. Will be the third.
Thank you. It's all about the team. I mean, listen, the bottom line is this, our kids are going to do great. I I endorse the move. And the bottom line for me is this. So I was at a basketball game the other day. We were playing a school from four J. And it was packed in there. And quite frankly, the parents don't care who you're playing. We, it was a competitive game. We won, which I loved. And it was men's, a boys' basketball game. At the end of the day, it doesn't matter whose helmet is on there. I always want to be Sheldon, every single time, right? But the reality is, we want kids to go out and compete and play well. I don't think the community, if you hear things in the community about, you know, we've we packed it up because we're now a five A school. I just, that to me is, I think people are thinking beyond the mark. I think we'll be more competitive. And I think it's a good move for us in the short term. It's actually something Russ and I had talked about three, four years ago. And Russ is the AD, said, this is probably something we need to think about. I think the time's right. I think the new coaching situation is right. And the new momentum at the high school is right. I think we'll be competitive. I hope we win the state championship in five A and and then we'll get moving from there. Is that Belichick enough? Or is that more? Okay, there you go.
I love football too. So I'm, I do see that it it's going to open the door for maybe some other kids that didn't feel like they're like super great at it. But they can become great, you know, and it'll let them get in the door where maybe they wouldn't have even tried if they knew, oh, man, these are all, you know, star athletes on the team. So I appreciate. I think, you know, we'll be able to build kids. And that is, I think, sports is supposed to do that. It's great for the community. We all love a a great game and to support our kids, but we really have to support them all, you know, all completely their whole being instead of just their athletic prowess. We, we were able to go with Melissa Roberts with the Student Services to visit some of the schools that have the special needs programs and seeing what's, what's available to our students. And in in some ways, it it's, it's a very growing program. And we're just seeing how we are going to have to keep that in mind too in all of our decisions coming forward in space and in funding. And and, you know, we, we just are going to do it because we have to do it. And I, but it was good to see that we have some really solid services for our our kids in Douglas County. And we're, we're happy that the work that has been done. Thank you, Melissa.
Jared, if we do well with football, do you think Taylor Swift will come?
I hope not.
I have nothing else.
Nothing to add to benefit the students this night, tonight?
Heard coming over today that, is it CBS that's going to carry the Super Bowl game? They're going to do split screen, half of the game and the other half Taylor Swift. So I hope that's not true, but that's, that's going to happen. Just briefly. I hope that's not true, but that's, that's gonna happen. Just briefly, uh, uh, Director Minor and Krimmets and myself were the three that got to go on the tour for the special needs classrooms for Grove, Kew Crest, and Melrose. It was probably, uh, one of my favorite tours all the time on the board. I know. He's, he needs to pour some water over that console so we get a new one. But, uh, it was a fantastic, um, just let those little kids and the staff are just, they're just, it's amazing. And the general population, they don't see that. They don't know what, what public education that, you know, is required to do and we should do it. That's, that's part of, that's part of our makeup, in my opinion. But, um, I cried when I got in my car by myself because I just, these little kids, you just wonder what they're gonna be like, you know, a few years down the road. And, and I'm really glad to be a part of that. So if she does another tour like that and we can get three more board members, I think it's to go, can't do four because of the stupid laws. But if we can get three more, I think it's really important for all board members to, and we got to see your son. Did he tell you we said hi?
You mentioned it for some reason.
But, uh, I'm just, and I'm sure you are too. You, you experienced it and, uh, it's just really, just educators and the aides are just so special. It's like they're angels that come down work with our kids. Okay, our next meeting will be February twenty-first. It will be a work session at the district office. And the topic is, um, we're gonna go over the mid-year numbers. And, um, Director Johnson will be given his presentation on, uh, what's, what do you, what's, I want to make sure I get a call correctly.
Ration.
Racism. Okay. He's got probably a fan, a nice, but we're looking forward to that. And, um, so that's on the twenty-first. So when we adjourned the, the board, uh, we're not done, but uh, you'll get to go home, but we will go into executive session. Uh, ORS nine, one nine two six six oh two I. Uh, the board and the superintendent will have our, uh, check-in. Part of our evaluation process. And as I said last time, he's not in trouble. It's an agreement that we have that we, we do a check-in. So we're, we're getting ready to do his evaluation here in a few more weeks. And then we will go into, we'll come out of that. We'll go into ORS one nine two six six oh two D to conduct deliberations where the person's designated by the governing body to carry out, uh, labor negotiations. So hopefully we'll get done in time and see you on the twenty-first. Okay, meeting's adjourned.